I'm going to call the December eighth, 2020 meeting of the Detroit City Council at six forty-three. We have the roll call, please.
Shelley Engel, Building Commissioner.
Eric Page, Parks Commissioner. Greg, can you tell us you're there? Or Shep? Jim Tret, Mayor, words of preparedness. Shep, are you there? Well, we thought we had him.
He's there. I can see him.
Okay.
He's there, but he's connecting to audio.
There he goes. Now he just needs to unmute. There he is.
I'm back.
Okay. Just tell us you're here, Shep. This is roll call.
I'm here.
Your name?
Greg Shepherd, Street Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Okay. Declarations of interest and next party contact. Moving along, announcements. It is with much regret that I have to announce that Harold Hills passed away this morning. Received word from Vicki Larson Hills, his daughter-in-law, that Kevin was with him last night and he passed away this morning. Harold served on the Detroit City Council and actually was sworn in as mayor back in two thousand and four. So it is a sadness that we announced his passing today. And our sympathies go out to Yvonne, his wife, and the whole family. So sad news for all of us. Also, John Mantey is not with us tonight. He is in quarantine right now. Should be noted that Nate Nadine is in the hospital. And so he's dealing with those issues and family issues there too. So our thoughts are with every, all of those things. We'd like to start the meeting tonight with Tim Luke, who would like to address council on some of the things that he's been involved with. So, Tim, I'm going to give you the floor. Tim, are you there?
How's that?
There you go.
Better. Good evening. Tim Luke. Also on here is Gary King, going to kind of back me up here or anything else. I wanted to address council tonight to let them know and just bring everyone up to speed of a consortium that I'd been working on and Gary also and some other folks for cleanup for Detroit. As a loose knit, there's been all sorts of this, that, the other. I want to clear the air of everything. Of course, this is not tied to the city of Detroit, just city residents and so forth. But I wanted to address council to be able to answer any questions they may have about what's been going on, what we're doing, what we're able to do, what we've been able to do and so forth. We put together a consortium for cleanup from logging to ash and trash to concrete, to site prep, to sewer and septic repairs, replacements, so forth and so on. And it's a lot of volunteering been going into this. But basically what we've got is I got a phone call a few weeks ago, quite a few weeks ago, from Gary King from American Underground and and he basically said, "Tim, you know, I don't, I don't know you, but I've been told to give you a call because I know you've kind of been involved with these efforts and so forth." He has a underground utilities and logging company and he was connected to the community for many years with friends and family and so forth. And was concerned that the tree removal and such that a lot of people were doing was not exactly healthy for our city streets and otherwise sometimes and basically leaving, making and leaving a mess. And so we put our heads together and I started networking to see if we couldn't get a group together that could all be on the same page and and look out for everybody, including the infrastructure of the town. And so basically, our, our mission statement is to help anyone that wants to help themselves to clean up their lots for what they have available in revenues or, or so forth or less. And by doing that, each person, each company and so forth is their own individual entity. We do have an attorney that we're consulting who's a resident, who's volunteering his time also to help risk management and so forth and look out for pitfalls. And I haven't got the update yet from Gary Hill update. You're probably here, but Zipley Fiber was actually supposed to be dropping lines today up on Butte Tumble in that area and that whole section was going to be logged and and started to be cleaned up and so forth. I know there's another logger down on the San Yen Loop area that is not involved with consortium, but I have, you know, talked to Tim Lasco, who's kind of overseeing that and so forth. However, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know what was going on, what we had done. A few weeks ago, I talked to Jim about this, gave him the overview, also Shelley, and gave her the overview, answered a lot of questions, listened to concerns and so forth. And you know, one of the things that I just wanted to bring forth is that the trees have to be removed, so many of them, almost all of them. And it, it takes some pretty heavy equipment and so forth. It's going to cause some wear and tear on the roads, but by putting this concerted effort together in a systematic form, we're trying to minimize how much travel across the roads and how much damage and so forth takes place and also the equipment that's chosen to do this. Keeping into consideration first and foremost, you know, the infrastructure and the road system. As I said to Jim today, you know, risk management, a lot of, a lot of that is just communication, letting everybody know what's going on and, and addressing concerns and communicating what's, what's happening and, and what to expect and so forth. So with that, I've been very clear over and over with many people. Just because I, you know, I'm not in city council yet until next month, but I kind of spearheaded this and started with the metal removal because Dale Wardinger from Wardinger Recycling was up there and the Eichlers and so forth. And we were just kind of going crazy, walking all over town, doing what we could for who we could. And it got so big and so fast that we decided that we really need to have a systematic approach to this. So Jody Evans is a resident who lost her home up by the Silver Bullet. Jody's coming on board as a volunteer, two days a week. We're going to set her up either in Mill City or hopefully in Detroit this week or next and get her a temporary office set up in a in her RV or someone's or something and get her a phone number, a cell phone that she can take all these calls and with people that want questions answered on basically, you know, how to do this. A lot of people want to and they want to do their own stuff, but they really don't know how. And we're, we're here to help them manage that and weed through all the information that we have to do this safely, environmentally friendly, road system friendly and, and fast, as fast as possible to avoid pitfalls of the weather and so forth. So I just wanted to let you guys know what was going on. I know most, if not all of you, know something's going on. And there's all sorts of rumor mills that pop up for this and that. And I've had to taste, take those day at a time and extinguish them that this is not the city. This is just a group of us that are in the city and but we would love nothing more than to get, you know, support from everyone. And I don't know how that exactly looks or so forth, but I'm just here to, to answer any questions and let you know what we had going on so far. And if, if I can, Jim, I'd like Gary to add to that if, if that'd be all right, because Gary King is from American Underground is the spearhead of the logging operation and the tree removal.
Hey, folks. Yeah, what Tim said pretty much hits it on the barrel. From my standpoint, when I jumped into this thing, you know, my head instantly went to, we're basically co-mingling trades at this point, you know, it's like a subdivision on steroids with a logging operation. The liabilities are the first thing that came into mind with me. And that's water cans, roads, sewer cans, water meters, you know, we got aerial going on. And there's just a lot of scheduling and, and a ton of things that need to happen and people involved just to try and make this thing happen. And Tim hit it on the head, just trying to work through all those moving parts along with the, along with the folks who own the lots. More power helps me specifically to get some of these questions dealt with quickly. It's not a fast project. You know, we have all those pieces to work around, septic tanks, you name it. So I'm working pretty happy with the forester right now, and I think we got a pretty good plan. Keith Owens on board. He's trying to get ahead of us to get metal and some things picked up, but my issues really are and I, some feedback would be great is I know there's been some, some heartburn over some road issues in the past and I don't know what happened and I, I don't really care. I just don't, I want to do everything we can to try and facilitate that not happening on our end or our operation. And any, any input would be great. If there is going to be some heavy construction equipment, I went out and bought shovel yesterday with three bars tracks so we can keep that to a complete minimum. A lot of this logging equipment will not work and it'll tear every single road up we have. So those are kind of the way the moving parts I'm looking at. We're probably going to end up handcuffed. As, as the day went on today, we're probably going to end up hand cutting the majority of this stuff just due to the fact of a lot of that heavy equipment that has hot saws and stuff. It's all single bar and it's just going to erosion control roads. It's going to be a mess. So we're trying to facilitate that to try and keep it as a finished somewhat subdivision that's been logged off, if that makes any kind of sense at all. To add, go back to your question on Zipley. We got that dealt with today. Zipley dropped line and, and we got what we needed done, which was a huge hazard. There's more, but it'll be a continual. It'll be a continuum throughout the process, to be honest with you. A lot of the support we need is really from the city council. I know that North Sky and Zipley are up against the timeline for Fed money, you know, to get that system up and going so they, they can get paid. And I understand all that. And I know they want to facilitate as, as minimal risk management as possible touching it. But as long as everybody's on the same page, that we will have to touch some of that stuff. So some ways, there's just no options of getting this mass cutting operation done, to be honest. So that, that, I hope that answered some questions.
And so let me summarize something that I think Gary and I both want to we want to communicate well is that you know, we're, we are about doing the lightest amount and the least treading on our roads and so forth. That's why Gary and I are working together because we've already seen some people just come in and go and for better sense of term, you know, rape and pillage kind of situation. And we don't want that. And it's not that we're against anybody else or anything. We just are trying to do a large scale quality, low impact cleanup that will benefit anyone that chooses to, to do that and use that. And we wanted to communicate that to the city that we're taking ultra precautions from the type of equipment and the type of operation and so forth, because being an underground contractor, as Gary is, he's well aware, far more well aware than most logging companies about the damage that can happen and will happen and what can be ran on the roads and so on and so forth. So that's, that's why, that's why we're here. And that's why what, what we're doing.
Okay. First of all, anybody who was going to speak, and you guys did a good job, but please identify yourself, your name. In particular, on this kind of a meeting, because Michelle, when she types up the meetings, a lot of times doesn't know who's talking. So please identify yourself. At this point, other questions from council for Tim were?
I had, I had one question and I don't quite understand what your connection with Zipley or your interaction with Zipley is. I don't. What do, what do you guys logging have to do with Zipley?
Zipley has to lay down the lines as Gary has been in contact with Zipley and with Consumer Power with all of the anytime there's overhead lines and so forth that need to be laid down to take care of the logging, Shelley.
Okay. Thank you. So, so then, so, so you wanted the city council to do what?
You know, that's a great, that's a great question. I don't know that we want anything. I'm going to let Gary ask that question. Anything? We more than anything want to be in communication of what's going on and find out if you have any questions, concerns and so forth. Hopefully we've answered most of them before there is, but you know, none of, nobody's looking for any kind of get out of jail free card, if you will. But I mean, mostly anything is we, we want, we'd love to have the blessing of
city connections unstable.
Can't do anything about it. Let's wait.
What's that?
Shep, can you mute? Do you know how to mute the mic?
Oh, that's always. Shep, you got to mute your mic or you come across. Anyway, you know, we would love nothing more than to have the blessing of the operation to, and, and know that we're really treading lightly as, as lightly as possible. And I wholeheartedly believe more lightly than any other company, whether it would be FEMA, FEMA subcontractors or otherwise. You know, they can always, if FEMA subcontractor, subcontractors come in and so forth and tear stuff up and great, they have insurance and you can repair it and so forth. We want to just completely avoid that. And by doing what we're doing, we're going to avoid the majority of that because we're going to take care of things so much better than anyone that's not concerned and directly connected to this community would. That's, that's really what it's all about.
I think, I think Charlie too, if I could add something, Gary with American Underground again. Really, my mind always goes to infrastructure, you know, what infrastructure you guys do have left is, is my goal. And then, then on top of that comes common sense. And so here we're putting fiber, brand new fiber up when we know the whole town needs really logged and in several areas. And, and so now we're dealing with politics and money and funding and all these other entities. So really what I'm looking for is just support and backup, you know, when some of those things are needed. That's it. Nothing more. I'm in contact with them, but really just from a city council standpoint, just support and, and backup if needed, if there is any. That's, that's it.
Which I want to add to that too. I want to thank Jim because I know I got a call first thing this morning from Gary and because Zipley backed out at the very end and so forth. And I know I talked to Jim and, and you know, you guys ran it up the line and I just really appreciate that, that they got it taken care of and handled and and I mean, that, that's huge because, you know, it was kind of launch day today. I mean, we've been working on stuff for weeks, but this was kind of launch day in a big, in a big scale today. And that, that would have shut things real, real, real fast and real hard.
Other questions? Comments? Counsel Rangel?
Well, it seems to me that if, you know, there's a bunch of volunteers, as long as you do no harm. I got nothing.
Well, Shelley, let me say, the volunteer part is mostly just me organizing and Jody dispatching and so forth. Of course, we've been volunteering some cleanup stuff, but you know, we, all of, all of these people are, are licensed and bonded contractors and so forth. So very professional, every one of them are professionals in their field and so forth. And so I want to be, you know, clarify that really good. It's the, the volunteer part is mostly the organization and the little bit of handwork, you know?
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I, I'd like to weigh in on the fact that, you know, I appreciate the efforts from all the people that have been involved in the cleanup and, and, you know, the, there's been a, a lot of reach out by, by several different individuals that never asked for any money out of what they did up there. And that's kind of continuing, I think. And I, and I certainly appreciate the contractors that are coming to the forefront to, you know, to try and put it all together. However, from a city standpoint, you know, we are not contracting with anybody and it's not our position as counselors to endorse or do anything related to, I mean, we're, we're not in a position to support or not support a contractor coming to town. They have to come to town with their credentials and it's, it's a little bit of a difficult position, I think, for the city to, to, you know, provide any endorsement related to that. Up to this point, it's been you know, a lot of volunteer work and people are having to find their own way on that. Once the city crosses that line and endorses somebody and something goes wrong, we're in a bad position. So I just want to make, make that point aware that it's you know, it's a free market and it's difficult for as, for the city unless they're working directly for the city to make any kind of an endorsement. So that's my, my input there.
Can you say, makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. We understand that wholeheartedly. It wasn't as much as of an endorsement.
Yeah. Just in case anybody missed it, rest of council, Tim did put out a, on social media a statement last week, I think it was, that said that he declared it was not part of the city, it wasn't city endorsed. And, and so he, and he has tried to knock that in the head because it has come across as, oh, this is what the city's doing. And, and he's been very vocal. I've seen that in his, you know, letting people know that's not the case. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. You know, it's, it's private. I, I think as far as the city concerned, you guys are you know, your own social service agency or your own contractors, however you want to work it. And, and you're working with individual lot owners. And so they have that right. We've said that from the very beginning. I also remember in your post, you said, hey, if you want to wait for FEMA, you're fine. So I say, I think with that understanding, I don't have a lot of heartburn. I, I agree with Eric, it's going to be awful hard for us to endorse you because I think that does put the city stamp on it where people, when Tim, you and I talked about that a little earlier, where that people would view that as, oh yeah, we are, so if something does happen, all of a sudden the city would be on the hook and we can't be, can't afford it. So go from there.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that. And I want to, like I said, you know, I'm a counselor-elect and not in office yet, but been very clear with that. It's one of those things where you know, you have, you have to be careful so forth, but I can't let caution slow down the the great deed that everybody's doing. So just being very clear with everyone and everything. And, and I, I believe Gary said it really good where it isn't about that we're necessarily wanting endorsement as much as just a partnership of, of just whether it would be us as the consortium or other contractors that are trying to do the work, but sometimes such as the Zipley situation. And you know, sometimes we just want the council to know who this consortium is, the group that and no different than anyone else that would be vested or, or vetted, I should say, and so forth. And if any, if there's any help that we would need, we just want as much cooperation as we can get and we want to give as much cooperation as possibly give. And see our, see our great town cleaned up. That's infuriating.
I, I would just like to add, you know, just like Tim said, my, my ultimate goal is really, I, I want to get ahead of any problems that might arise. So you know, if, if public works or if the city sees something going on with roads or if we need some help with some identifying or finding some public work so that doesn't get ran over, that's all I'm after, literally. That's it. The rest of it really is just communicating with the other, other entities and landowners.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update. And we'll go from there.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
And just for everybody's notice, we are, because of the Zoom thing, we're on a time limit of three hours and we had to come on early to try and make this work rather than wait till six thirty. So thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on. Approval of the minutes of the last month meeting, special city council session on October twenty ninth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of that meeting.
Okay. Have a motion, Counsel Rangel, to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Page, discussion. Shep, are you unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. All those in favor of accepting this minutes in the special session, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I'm standing. Did I hear an aye as opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular, regular meeting minutes of Tuesday, November tenth, regular session of twenty twenty?
There's, there's a little misprint on, on page three on the November tenth minutes. It said the, the drain was burned pretty bad. It was actually, what I said was the Patton Creek drainage was burned, was burned bad. It wasn't the drain pipe.
Okay. So do I have a motion to as corrected?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
Motion, Counsel Page, second.
Second, Commissioner Engel.
Engel, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. I'm going to get through one more thing. Approval of bills payable. She, Christine submitted a letter for the packets. It says she, she apologized for not being able to provide financial statements at this time. Quick books as well as all payroll records were lost in the fire. We're expected, we expected these records to be backed up through our carbonate subscription, but they were not. Fortunately, I had not, I had sent a copy of Quick Books for auditor in early August for audit purposes, which meant I was able to retrieve an intact QB version during all transactions through July thirty first, twenty twenty. And then she goes on to explain what all that means. So hopefully we'll have that coming. So do I have a motion to approve any bills which are not raising a conflict of interest? Any questions on bills payable?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Counsel Page, moves to pay the bills, second.
Also, second.
Second, Counsel Page, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same, all those opposed, same sign? Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Going back up, I forgot the US Forest Service is here. It was a quick update. So if we could have them come up here.
Hi, so I just want to say hello to the city of Detroit, council members.
Sean, could you? Sean, could you identify yourself for director?
Yeah, I'm Sean Rivera. I'm the, the brand new district ranger for the Detroit Ranger District. And, uh, just wanted to kind of show up and let you know I'm here and start opening up lines of communication between, um, our district and the city. And, um, help you guys out however we can legally. Um, and we're just here to support you however we can. So if you have any questions, um, I, I might not have the answers tonight, but I can run them down for you and we can open up those lines of communication. So.
Welcome to the, to the canyon.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
And where do you come from?
Well, Eugene, um, right now. So I'm a recent, uh, law grad. So I'm a, I'm a licensed attorney and I'm also a former military officer. So kind of been all over the place in the last, uh, eight years.
Okay. Well, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Oh, uh, Sean, this Greg Shepard, um, I used to work down there Detroit years ago, but I was wondering, do you plan on doing any, um, erosion mitigation, mitigation efforts, you know, by air, like helicopter or whatever, uh, grass seed and that sort of thing? To get, uh, the ground stabilized in certain areas, especially around Detroit and the highway.
I, I can't say with certainty. So I, this is all in my second week here. Um, I have to look at our program of work right now, which we are currently in the process of nailing down. And once I kind of take a look at all, all the projects that are going on for this next fiscal year, um, I'd be able to give you an answer, but I'm, I'm not quite sure off the top of my head right now. Okay. I'll give you my email address if you like. Um, and you can send any questions that you, you have my way and I can try to get you answers. Good. Um, it's sean.rivera@usda.gov.
Okay, thank you.
USDA.gov, okay. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Moving along to unfinished business, Rob Henry.
Mayor Tred, Mayor Tred, um, Annette has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, um, with Sean being so new, I, I know some of the answer to your question, um, Greg. At this point, um, aerial seeding is not, um, not quite there yet. I don't know where we're going to land on that. We do plan on doing some replanting, um, with, um, you know, just with some, with some seedlings and we plan on, on continuing that. I think the state has been doing some, some work with seeding and mulching and some stabilization that way. Um, so it's not much of an answer, but it's, it's a little bit of something.
Can you still hear me? Okay. Cause I, all of a sudden my blank screen is blank and I can't hear anybody.
Well, we can hear you.
Okay, that's all that counts. So moving along, uh, Rob Henry, can you give us a report on the water plant? I hear some good news is there?
Yeah. Um, so I've got, uh, I've got, uh, Matt Delmore with me. Um, I'm going to go through basically where we're at on the distribution system. And then Matt's going to talk a little bit about the treatment plant. And then we'll, we'll also talk about a little bit about funding and making sure we're on the right track and council knows where we're going with that. So right now we've, we've got the Brighten Bush intake and the Silver Bullet, they're up and running, uh, using temporary controls, very simple, simple controls. So that's good. We've been able to fill the reservoir. And, and of course that's being filled with untreated water. So it's not filtered and it's not, uh, disinfected. We've started flushing. Uh, we did a lot of flushing the week of, of, uh, of Thanksgiving. Um, and we've been able to flush all the lines that are not associated with the phase two B contract, which is the RNG's contract. We had a few lines that we, of, of RNG's that we had to go through to, to, uh, to, to flush, but that's just the way the system's laid out. Um, the flushing's gone decently. The, the one, the one big issue we have is that the city stormwater system, a lot of it doesn't function at all. So we had a, we, we made quite a few lakes out there. So I'm sure there was some inconvenience to property owners and, and, you know, we apologize about that. But it, we, we kind of had to, we had to do what we had to do when it came to that. One thing that is more experiencing, experiencing a significant amount of leakage in the system. We're looking at about a hundred gallons a minute is what we were looking for leakage. By comparison, the, we can pump 250 gallons a minute up into the system. So we essentially were, we're only netting 150 gallons a minute because we were, that was leaking out of the distribution system. And then the distribution system would drain itself, uh, overnight. So it was, it was a challenge getting, taking that, getting that taken care of. Uh, we found a few split service laterals where, um, where the heat has caused the PEX to, to split. And we found a few of those. We thought, okay, well, that is probably where all this leakage is coming from. Cause it doesn't take a whole lot of those to get to 100 gallons a minute. I mean, a hoe is going full blast is going to be 15 gallons a minute. So that gives you an idea of what, what 100 gallons a minute would look like. Um, so we, we, uh, brought American leak detection onboard to take a look at, uh, leakage. They've been on site since Monday. Um, they haven't found anything real significant that needed to be dug up, but, uh, I just got a call this morning that Bob had found a big leak near the forest, uh, the forest highway crossing. Um, so we shut that down and it was bubbling up out of the asphalt. And from the description that I got from Kenny, it was really significant. So we're hoping that that, that kind of is, was our big contributor. Uh, it's a little difficult in, in, in some of these areas. A lot of the water just doesn't come to the surface. So hopefully that's it. So we were able to get some of the, the first two rounds of the VOC testing done. The first round, we just did four samples down at the park and in, and in the west side of town. And we did that on lines that weren't flushed yet. So they were just filled up. We wanted to see, get a baseline to see where we were at, how big of a problem we were looking at. Those came back, those came back and they were negative for any of the regulated VOCs. The regulated VOCs are the ones that have a human health, uh, recognized human health, uh, problem associated with them. We did have, we did have, uh, three hits of non-regulated VOCs, but they were actually fairly low. So it's not, doesn't seem like that's a concern. The second round of tests came back yesterday and these were of tests of basically the same areas, but it was in the main line after it was flushed. Uh, and we were able to do more tests. Uh, every single one of those samples came back as non-detect. So as far as the main line goes, that looks really good. I've got a disclaimer that by saying that the amount of leakage that we had at the time, it's hard to say how long that water was actually in contact with, with the pipes to see if there, there is a, a significant problem. So when we, um, when we get the leakage under control, that's when we'll do the final, final rounds of, of that testing. So, so far, so good. Um, yesterday we got a letter from Oregon Health Authority that, um, laid out the requirements that, that the city's going to have to follow before you bring back, bring back online, anybody that's had their property burnt. Um, so we'll have to do benzene testing on each of those, each of those service lines. Right now our plan was to, to do testing on at least 10% of the non-burned lines, uh, service laterals. Because service laterals might be where the VOCs go because it's higher and VOCs are, are gas that tend to be, you know, they're going to be lighter than, than they, than the water. So it could chase them up there. And also they could have got pulled back into the system from there. So we'll be tested, once we get the leakage under control, we'll be testing 10% of the non-burned service lines. So that's where we're at with the distribution system. Um, on, in regard to the RNG lines, we've had discussions with FEMA and Oregon, uh, OEM. And Oregon OEM, they had their attorney look at the contract with RNG. And their attorney's, uh, position is that the city, because the city was making use of, of the lines that were in service, that sit, that the city has that, uh, responsibility to fix them if something went wrong with them. Um, and from that, from our standpoint, that's, that's good because that means if there is something wrong with them, which like I said, it doesn't look like there is, but if there is, then FEMA, uh, uh, could pay, would pay for that. But the guy at FEMA has to run that by, um, run it up the flagpole there FEMA to make sure that that's okay. Um, so right now we're just focusing on making sure we're getting the leaks fixed before we worry about flushing the RNG's lines. Um, and so that's, that's pretty much what I have on the distribution system. I think maybe we can, uh, and then Matt's going to talk about the, the, what's going on with the treatment and then we'll talk about funding. But if anybody, uh, this is a good time for questions.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm gonna, I'm just going to at least ask what, what, uh, how far off are we in terms of having non-podable water, um, being able to, uh, to flow in areas that we know are relatively leak proof and undamaged?
Um, if we, um, as soon as we, uh, locate the leaks and fix those, we'll be ready to go. Hopefully we'll have, uh, American leak detection should be through the system in the next couple of days. So, um, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping by next week.
And, uh, in terms of, uh, capacity for fire hydrant, uh, for fi- fire suppression.
Yeah.
What, where, where, where would we be once we, uh, I, I know we have, uh, we're in, in the step now. It's, we're taking baby steps here.
Yeah.
Non-podable water flowing to be used during construction or what have you, but, um, to, as we step towards, uh, you know, the next phase, which is being able to have some fire protection, where, what, what would be our capacities, uh, until we can get the, the secondary plant in place? And, and, uh, where are we going to land on that?
So the things that are, are, would limit fire capacity are, um, the fact that you have half as much storage in the reservoirs as you used to. That being said, if, as long as we take care of our leakage, get that, get that under control, uh, you'll have 220,000 gallons of water in that tank. And I think it's really important to keep that tank full all the time. And, um, that, so that would allow for, so typically for typical residential area, you're talking about a thousand gallons a minute for three hours. That's eight, that's 180,000 gallons. So that's enough to fight a, a residential fire. The, uh, tell you from the, from being out there doing the flushing, uh, the work we've done with adding the additional crossing up, up on the north, north side coming off front. The fire flows are way higher in, in, uh, in the west portion of town now. That was always a real concern during fires. And we had places where we're looking at 350 gallons a minute. And now we were easily getting, you know, 1500 out of, you know, out of the, out of those lines. So, um, we did.
That was a, you know, that certainly was a concern. There's small residential group up there now, but will be, you know, as we exponentially move out and there's various construction going on, being able to, uh, you know, know that we have fire support is a big deal. So, thanks for that input on that.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
This Keith Munn.
Go ahead, Keith.
I understand it's going to test the water at everybody's. I understand you're going to test samples of everybody's water before it's go for everybody at every resident.
Um, so the, the state is requiring us to test at every resident that, um, has had a fire. So that's a requirement for everything. The other thing that they've requested is that we test at 10% of the non-burn services. So that we can, so, and I'm assuming that if we find VOCs at any of those, they're going to make us test all of them. So that's really something that, you know, the council can direct us to do is to pull a test at, uh, you know, at every, at every person's, um, service. It's a, they're about a hundred and $50 a test. Um, that's definitely a, a FEMA recoverable cost though.
Okay. Would seem to me when we get to that point, it's, we can, we can start on a random, you know, a random run. And if we have a couple of hits, then we move that testing up to a another level.
Yes, that's the plan. That's our plan at this point.
Okay. If nothing else, thank you, Rob. I appreciate it.
Um, so.
Hey Jim, so I was going to weigh in a little bit. This is Matt Delmore with HPH on the treatment plant side of things. Um, so we have West Tech is finishing up their testing on their treatment plant before they can get it shipped out. Um, one of the things I'm working to get done kind of in a haste while they're doing that is we need to have, it, it's not just enough to have the equipment, but we actually have to have a treatment plant to put all this in piping, uh, disinfection, pre-filters, all that. So for the past couple of weeks, I've been getting a set of 90% uh, design drawings for a temporary water treatment plant. And I've reached out to contractors and the original plan was to have a temporary structure built that would house this treatment plant for the next couple of years. Um, and I've been working with state forests to come up or go through their permitting process to get, get that approved on their property. Um, and then in our talks with a potential contractor, um, that, that might be doing this work, they had a great idea to uh, essentially repurpose the reservoir A that was burned in the fire um, and turn that into the city's future water treatment plant. And then we would reconstruct if necessary, and we don't know if it's, it's going to be necessary at, for storage. But if necessary, we could reconstruct a new treated water reservoir elsewhere adjacent to the new water treatment plant. But utilizing the concrete foundation and walls of the existing water treatment, or not, sorry, not existing water treatment. The existing treated water reservoir would allow us to more rapidly put a building together that could house both the temporary and the permanent water treatment facilities. Um, so that, that is something we're looking at. Um,
Great idea.
Yes. So that, that kind of makes, move a little quicker. All we would need to do on that point is just throw a short, uh, stem wall extent, extension stem wall on, on top of the concrete and put a roof on top of it and we're good to go. So the next step I, I've got is I'm working with the Oregon Health Authority to get this treatment plant approved. So they need to go through a preliminary review of the treatment plant and provide their conditions to approval. Um, so that is, uh, the process I'm working on right now with them. And then I will also simultaneously be working with a construction contractors to get some prices put together and a timeline of getting this all installed and operational. Um, so that, that's kind of where we're at right now. Um, on the funding side of things, we are nearly complete with the USDA application for EQWAG funding. Um, really everything, the application is complete outside of, we're just waiting on some financial information to be sent over. Really, everything, the application is complete outside of, we're just waiting on some financial information to be sent over USDA. But once that is sent over, then we can finalize this application. The, I guess unfortunate news with that is it does not sound like they will be able to review this application on this round of continuing resolution funding. So they will need to, that basically that'll have to get put off until the next round of continuing resolution, which should be, from what I'm told by USDA at the start of the year. So that, that's where we're at funding wise. And yeah, for some portions of this funding can be covered with the insurance extra expense fund that the city has. I, I've been a little hesitant to do that thus far because I don't want, I, I don't know what else the city is, is needs to utilize that for. So where possible, I, we've been trying to avoid utilizing that funding. But, you know, at a certain point, we'll, we'll need to either work with a combination of that or it depends how long this EQUAG grant is going to take to come through with USDA. If it's going to be early January versus late January, then it might be something the council wants to look at utilizing some of that extra expense fund if they have some available to kind of get a head start on some of the construction aspect of things.
Great. And a big thank you to Matt and Jason Carmen, who, Matt, who's he, Phil, it's?
He, he is with RCAC, and he was been assigned by USDA from RCAC to essentially assist the city with the application process.
And he, and he, and, and just for everybody's information, he and Matt have done a great job of, of kind of helping me through that process, including the part that we had to do twice because they didn't like the PDF they sent us. We had to go back and do it online. And Jason had to deal with the fact that I couldn't get online to do it in terms of they had a problem. So that's what Jason and I did over the weekend was deal with that and get it done. So, but Matt, thank you and for all that work.
Mayor, I've got one more, one more issue.
Okay.
Thing to cover. So, so the last thing, and actually I do need council action on this. And that is, one of the, one of the funding streams would be through Business Oregon, IFA, its Special Public Works Fund. It's a zero interest loan for two years, and then they intend on converting that to a grant. It's up to five hundred thousand dollars, and that can be used for when we get into using FEMA money for their twenty-five percent match. And, and what I would like, and, and also we can get that money sooner, so we can get some of the contractors paid and, and, you know, trying to, I guess, to, since I'm running a business here to, to get us paid for, for some of our time, it won't cover everything. Anything, anything you use that for has to be something that's FEMA eligible. So, but I guess I would need, I would need a, a direction from the council to apply for that, for that Special Public Works Fund loan. It doesn't commit you to getting it at this moment, but, but we need a, we need a council resolution to, to apply, to allow us to apply for that.
Okay, do I have a motion to allow HPH Engineering to apply with Business Oregon for a, what loan is it?
Special Public Works Fund.
Special Public Works Fund Loan?
Yes.
And I can't see anybody, so somebody just chime in and remember to tell me who you are.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to allow HPH to move forward with applying for the Special Public Works Loan. I don't know if I need to add any more to that.
I don't think so. Go ahead. Second Counselor, Motion Counselor Paige, do I have a second?
Counselor Ingalls, second.
Counselor Ingalls, seconds. Discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Objection, same sign? Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, so moving along, City Hall. We still haven't been able to find anyone to move modular up to Mill City. Counselor Page and Kelly and I roundaboutly have had a conversation, and maybe we should start looking at other options in case. We have been looking for a rental in, in State, and we've looked at one that I guess was not acceptable. We are continuing to work with Sweet Home. They are also working with, with us trying to find somebody to move that up. We have another company we're going to contact. We're trying to contact to see if they could do it. So we're continuing on all fronts to try and get something so we can get into a more permanent position, temporary position anyway. And so just for information, we are looking at other options at this point, and we'll keep everybody posted as we get information and, and go from there. Any other comments? Six point three, the fire recovery study with Paul Alljets. I'm going to have staff remove this. I've attempted a couple of times to call him. I've not heard back from him since the original request, so I think he has either lost interest or doesn't come back. So without objection, we'll remove that from the agenda. We are looking at using the COVID funding, and we're trying to move fist fast on this one now, using some of that COVID money for a video sound system for the new city hall. We got some information from Sweet Home, and we will be trying to find, find an outlet that will sell that to us. It was fairly cheap. Everything they did was five thousand dollars, was no more than five thousand dollars. So we're hoping to continue with that and get that done right away. Donation of the work deal, Elizabeth Smith, who's done a lot for the city, is second homeowner up there. Her family donated a work vehicle, a pickup to the city to hopefully replace the one that we lost in fires that got up there. And unfortunately, what they found was that it, Bob couldn't use it, water tech, because it's not four-wheel drive, and he needs that to get to where he needs to get to, to work. So it looks like the Mike Vetter, the park maintenance employee, will you be using it to do his rounds? And if it gets snowy and he can't use it, he intends to use a side-by-side to get around in the snow. So a big thank you to Elizabeth Smith and her family for, for providing that to the, to the city. Questions on that? And disaster code modifications. So McCray Carmichael, are you with us?
I am. Hi, everybody. So what, I'm back tonight to look for some direction with you all and confirm understanding from things that were talked about in our work session with the Planning Commission and City Council. Let me back up, McCray Carmichael, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Government's city planner for the city of Detroit. So last month, we looked at, with the Planning Commission, provisions in the code, both an emergency ordinance that would allow for some long-term housing, emergency housing provisions. But then we also talked about other things that would fall more into legislative amendment code updates. And so I drafted a staff report memo for you all to look at that we could go through. Does every, do all the counselors have it right now?
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
I do, I don't?
Shep, do you have it?
No.
For all purposes, Kelly could share screen it, and everyone could potentially see it if you wanted. I would available that way. But I'll also just walk us through the bullet points that we can talk through. So, you know, the first point is that there's the process that we can follow. One is by creating the emergency ordinance for the city of Detroit, you have the authority within your city charter to respond to this as an emergency ordinance and not necessarily follow the legislative amendment process. The difference being, you know, the emergency ordinance, I would potentially bring back to the next city council meeting for you all to review, hold a hearing, and if you were ready, could make a decision in one hearing. If we were to follow the legislative amendment process, we have some more noticing requirements, and we have to host two public hearings. And so I, I, I see that there's two, two paths for us to take. And that is the first component of the temporary housing and the RV and the accessory structures and things that are in response to the fires directly and people's ability to access, we could do through the ordinance. And then these other things where we were talking about potential minimum lot size, design standards for your commercial development or more if you want. And cleaning up the RV permitting in a, in a broader sense should come through a legislative amendment process. So that, that's just a starting explanation. Does anyone have questions about that before we get into some of the details that I was looking for? Clarification from you all on?
Now, they looked good. Thank you for condensing it so easily in a way to understand. Shep, do you, do you need to see it? I can share my screen.
So I'll just start talking through the, the points that I'm wanting to make sure that I'm on task with. So what we heard from the meeting, Renata and I, when we met with you all, was that you wanted to have people be allowed to put RVs on. We weren't sure if you wanted to allow one or two RVs as part of this on people's property.
I would say one.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm going to go with that unless I hear more.
Well, that's what we were talking, because it's for the, for the residents while they rebuild.
Yeah. That is where, that is where this application is. Like, this won't take away the other RV intent, intent permitting that you all have in place. But this is really targeted at residents being able to come back on their property. And so what we talked about was twenty-four months with an option of a one-year extension after that. You'd have to come back and get a new permit. Chemical toilets, what I had, the timeframe was off, so I just wanted to follow up. I heard eighteen months, but that, you know, that's not consistent with the twenty-four months for the RVs. Do you want to have it be less? Do you want to still allow chemical toilets on people's properties? Shorter periods of time, and that they have to get a permit? And we don't have to, I mean, I can bring you, I can bring, this can, this is out there again, and I, I will bring something and we can modify it.
Well, as soon as they have a building permit of any kind, they immediately are, the code allows for a chemical toilet, right? Or, yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So that, that takes care of it as soon as they actually have a, a valid building permit.
So this is more for the space of someone's living in their RV, and they necessarily can't hook up to their septic or don't want to be having like an onsite, a different kind of onsite that comes in, you know, flushes the RV.
Part of me, if we're going to let them have an RV rebuilding, why don't we let them have the porta potty too, as much as I don't like having them in town? But it, it just seems to me it would be consistent if we did it both the same way, and they're both the same.
I would only offer from one standpoint, just having it, the timeframe be consistent with the RV permit. You know, maybe what it could be is on that. Because let's think about it, why would someone else, if you, if you aren't living in your RV and you're not, you're not in the process of building, you're not actively with your building permit where you'd be allowed to have the toilet. We could have it as part of the permit process on how are, how are you having sewage collection of your permit? And chemical toilets as an option, but that we don't necessarily offer it. I don't, that's an idea.
That seems to make sense, because if they're not, if the RV is becoming semi-permanent, at least for a while, you're not, you know, moving it around to go fishing every weekend. You're going to have to have your RV pumped anyway. So to me, that, that would be consistent with that kind of a need, and that makes sense.
So more just a mechanism of the permit as an option. But that we want to know, like, if you're getting a, if you're planning on having a chemical toilet, we want that box checked on our permit.
Yep.
Accessory structures being allowed, primary to the structure being rebuilt. All other development standards would have to be met, setbacks, the size, height, you know, there are some components that ties to your primary structure, but I think, I think we can have some latitude. Item C on my report, primary structures need to be built within how many months, though? And that's just having something that ties it back for, hopefully this doesn't have to become a compliance, but that you have something that holds people accountable.
Do, do we want to stick with that twenty-four months that we're using for a lot of other things, just to stay consistent?
What do you mean by that, Kelly? Like, primary structures must be built within twenty-four months of you getting a building permit for the accessory structure?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Hi, this is Michelle Tesdale, and I'm trying to think through that two years. And if we don't have water, we're waiting for sewer, we're not sure about underground power. It's going to be a real time pinch, because maybe when we are for sure, it's in twelve months. And that means that all of us that had homes burned down have to get it built within twelve months. There's going to be a lot of traffic up there. A lot of builders are going to be busy. I'm thinking we got to, we should stick with, with three years. I mean, there's a lot of pressure to build a house. And if it's in two years, that means that we got to rely on all the utilities being put in and being ready for us.
Well, I think if we see those not being done, that we could readdress the timelines.
Yeah. Yeah. I am not comfortable with three years. Absolutely, I'm not.
Some of these people aren't even going to be able to start until after FEMA gets done. You got to think about that. That's two and a half years away.
No, they're going to start within the next, by the end of the month, they expect to have.
They're not going to finish for two and a half years.
So Phase two will be done before that. I've been assured by FEMA. So.
Well, if I can speak to.
That's what they said in paradise, too.
I'm sorry, who's talking?
Yeah, Keith. You need.
Okay, McCray.
Your problem?
I'm sorry, I, I got, I can't, I don't know who's speaking. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Keith Munn.
Ah, thank you.
McCray, I'd like to go back to, to A here. Instead of permit to have, a permit to have an RV would be allowed for up to twenty-four months with an option of one year, one year extension. I thought we had talked last month about making it possible to have two one-year extensions.
We can, if you want.
But they had to apply both here.
Time.
And that, that's consistent with what, what I've seen in other areas, and I, I felt comfortable with it, especially with that time period, we probably know what's going to happen with sewer potential.
Yeah, that people can be making decisions.
Yeah.
Bouncing down to the primary structure, though, keep that at twenty-four months, so twenty-four months, so say you're at like, we'll keep that at twenty-four months, right? Not, that is standalone. You've got in your building permit for your single, your primary residence, we expect you to come into compliance in that way.
Eric Page, Parks Commissioner, you know, I'm, I, I believe that on this, I, I believe that on this uh, the uh primary structure thing, uh, however we do this, we need to have some flexibility here. This, this process with the amount of permits being run through Marion County, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I do wanna keep uh, I do wanna keep people focused that are intending to rebuild focused on that prospect and not just think that uh, that, that this can go on forever, but I am not completely certain that um, that 24 months will give um people ample time to get this done. Um, especially looking at the fact that we're, the, the window that we're in right now is going into the dead of winter. And uh, I remodeled in spring up there uh in 1997 and that was a god awful spring to have a house torn apart. So timelines can be kinda uh tough on this. We either need to have, I think, some flexibility language in this or we need to look at that timeline possibly being expanded a little bit further than 24 months. There's my two cents.
Or I'd offer, you don't have to put a timeline on it. You know, yeah, I see you, Councilor Engel. I, I mean, but there is, right, that you could build it, you can have a hard number. You can have a hard number like you have with the permit with the potential of an extension that you allow for some flexibility, that someone can come in and, you know, explain what's going on. Or you don't have any timeframe, but I think that, I think it's good to have a timeframe. So.
Commissioner Page, Commissioner Page, with the, this is Commissioner Engel, so with the, with the 24 months plus the ability to have two one-year extensions, you don't think that's long enough or flexible enough?
I think that is, as long as we, if, if it's 24 months with two one-year extensions, that gives four years. I believe that is acceptable.
Up to four years, because you have to apply for both of those extensions.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I agree with you on that, yeah.
Okay.
Um, a single wide manufactured homes destroyed by the fire can be replaced with single wide. Um, and non-conforming, essentially this is getting at the non-conforming component. So I heard that you all wanted to allow single wides to still be able to go back. But this will be a sunset clause, like in, when this ordinance closes in, you know, four years. You would not be able to say, well, my house, my, my home burnt during the fires in September of 2020. Four years later, I want to be able to put a single wide on because I had one. No, sorry, that time has passed. Like, that, that's ultimately what we're working on with this. Um, and then there's, so then we get into the design standards. Um, I've heard a little bit that there's excitement and ideas about design standards up uh for Detroit. And, you know, currently there are the Detroit Avenue corridor design standards that are only for the CR zone. Um, I think that there's, I think there's probably another work session to potentially have with the planning commission again on visioning or if there's, or if city council, you want to direct planning commission to direct me to work with planning commission to come up with design standards. What, um, what specifically do folks have in mind in that visioning?
This is Counselor Page, I'm, I'm gonna weigh in on my, my thought process on this a little bit. I think it's uh really important that we direct planning uh to immediately address this issue and get with you on a work session. So those people that are looking at their commercial rebuilds on Detroit Avenue can have a guidance, uh, because there are gonna be some businesses that are gonna want to do this. And I, and I believe it's the, in the city's best interest to have uh design standards uh in the business district. I think that's really important. And the sooner we get that process worked through uh in cooperation with you with planning and, and get something nailed down, uh, it will open up that to get moving. And I'm sure there are some businesses, you know, looking for that direction and the sooner we do it, the better.
Is this uh above what you already have then in the corridor? The design standards that you have for the Detroit Avenue corridor?
Well, I think what we're looking for. Jim, did you weigh in on that? I mean, I'm, I think we're looking for a uniform theme.
Okay.
The business corridor is what we're kind of looking for. That's my uh thought on that.
Okay. Do other councillors have?
I think, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Page, but if we can let Dean O'Donnell speak, that would be great.
What, Dean?
Hello, yeah, this is Dean O'Donnell, I'm on plan. So the, the theme for, for Detroit Avenue is, is as we're talking about, it's called like a Timber Town theme. But that, in, in my mind, that theme should carry through for all the businesses, not just those businesses on Detroit Avenue. So that would be the marinas, the gas station, the motels. Everybody should carry that theme through to give continuity to the town.
Okay. Okay, so you're talking about, um, you know, making current standards more robust, that it really has a feel or this Timber Town and that expanding it to make sure that, that you are covering a larger area. And then it might be an overlay district that goes beyond just a zone because we have some residential that, um, about along Detroit Ave, so um, okay. I think I have a starting point. I'll need you all at the end of this to give me direction to do that. But I think I at least have heard what, I'd heard a little bit and Renata and I have been hearing a little bit more, so we wanted to clarify. Um, minimum lot size is 8,000 square, square feet and are we, and I've been looking through, the lot size was reduced, it looks like a, a few years ago, from 12,000 square feet to 8,000. Um, in keeping with, um, you know, I can bring back data on how many lot sizes you have that are below 8,000 square feet. For review, or we can pause on this, you know, the amendment can be an ongoing thing.
I brought that up a few weeks ago, that there's a fair amount of lots there, 75 by 100.
And you never told people who you are.
Uh, Greg Shepherd.
Thank you, that's for Michelle. Okay, keep going Greg, sorry.
I was just saying that there's a fair amount of lots that are, are 7,500 square feet. Uh, it might help to maybe think about uh, maybe dropping it down to 7,500 instead of 8,000.
Well, they're legal lots of record, people are gonna be able to come in and build on them. Um, but there is a different discussion, uh, you know, related to the sewer. And if the, if and when the sewer gets built and comes through, uh, that smaller lot sizes could be serviced, you know? Um, because the lot size now, and as it was, it's 12,000, it really is in response to septic in your drainage field. And so, um, but for all purposes, right now, people who have that 75 by 100 lot, legal lot of record, they're good. Whether they've built on it before or whether um they're gonna be rebuilding, they're gonna be able to come in.
Right, right.
So.
So it's my understanding that what you're asking is, we went from a 12,000 to an 8,000, still knowing that whatever was there is legal to, to rebuild on, but your question is to go down again from 8,000?
I think, we just heard that you all, a discussion about minimum lot sizes. I would offer, in what I think that we're talking about right now, I think a focus on um the RV component, the temporary housing provisions, the RV and the accessory structure, and then really getting um this timber theme developed and an overlay. Um, and we can, as we're moving, get, get an idea, um, like a buildable lot, buildable lands inventory on what, what's going on with our square footage. And I think it'll benefit the sewer authority also to understand what, what our numbers are. So I, this is a clarifying question. I think in light of like hitting the ground in the next four months, we should maybe pause, pause it for a little while and just have it on there as something that we keep thinking about. And I can keep bringing information to both planning commission and you all.
I agree.
Okay.
I, I, this is Commissioner Page, I, it would seem to me, so currently as, as the way it sits right now, if you have a 7,500 square foot lot and you had a structure on it that was lost in the fire, uh, or that lot is a grandfathered lot.
Yeah.
So it, what, what we would be doing with changing that lot size is changing the lot size for lots that did not have a structure. Because if you had a structure on your lot, on a non-conforming lot, you are still grandfathered.
Even if you have a piece of property in Detroit and haven't built on it yet and didn't have it impacted by the fire. Yeah, I mean, a structure destroyed, but if you have a legal non-conforming lot of record, you can build on it. Either way, so really the conversation is for the future, if you want to allow um someone to be able to create smaller lots than 8,000 square feet. Like if someone was, had a larger piece and wanted to subdivide it or partition it.
Yeah, so, so what we'd be talking about here is if somebody had a bare piece of ground that had uh uh enough room to put three 5,000 square foot buildable lots on.
Yeah.
You're gonna open up that door and that, in my opinion, would be, that's a long-term discussion that goes back into planning. Because right now, that has not a lot to do with our immediate rebuild.
Yeah, okay. I.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate you thinking through it. Um, and then we have the revising the current RV permit requirements to be just more streamlined. There's a lot of differences between the zones and how many you can have. And this could, I could easily wrap this into the design standards or we can just wait a little while and just roll out our, this temporary um RV housing for now and keep your permit as it is. And Kelly and I will work on getting really organized for managing the permits that'll be going through the city. What are you all's thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, Commissioner Page coming in here again on that. I'm, I'm hoping we can have our RV permit uh program nailed down well before spring.
Yes.
Okay, which, when you say our RV permit, I, I think what would help is if um we call permitting temporary housing and that will include RVs. Um, so we have a temporary housing provision, temporary housing permit or transitional housing that you can have for 24 months with potential of two extensions. And then we have our RV permit um as the code allows right now. Um, and so Counselor Page, are you talking about the permit uh nailed down? What do, what are you referencing when you say it's nailed down?
Two, two separate permitting.
Yeah.
Needles here, one, one for temporary housing, one for somebody that has been using uh their lot, has previously had an RV there and they're coming in for the summer, so to speak. Not necessarily with intention to be building, but they're coming in for the summer as, as we have had, you know, at many of those locations up there. That's where, where I want the temp, the, the, the permitting for the temporary housing to me is a completely different RV issue than it is for this other one that needs some teeth in it to be able to manage um those people that are coming in for only the summer and intending to place an RV. And that, that's the one that needs the teeth in it with, with fees and ability to um pull that permit in the event that they violate ordinances or become a nuisance.
Oh, okay, that you could go out and enforcement, say we're revoking your permit.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy, I mean, I know that you all went through some review of your RV permit in the past, recently, in the past couple of years. But I'm willing and happy to revise it for, and work on it as part of a legislative amendment. I think it, for the spring, that's what I'm hearing. Mayor Tritt, do you have something you want to say?
I'm waving my hand because my, my, my electrifying personnel. This is Mayor Tritt, I, my, my chief drive right now is we need to get the temporary housing stuff taken care of. And then immediately come back when we get that done and start looking at the RV permit process. I think my priority is, is getting the temporary stuff in so people can know what they can do.
Yeah, now have clear expectations of what they can do. So um essentially, I need you all to give me direction on how you would like me to proceed. You can, you'll see below, I have action needed. Um, direct staff to bring a resolution back to city council at the next city council meeting, January, maybe 4th, 7th. Um, you would take action on an emergency ordinance. Um, and that would be in conformance with the city charter and the emergency ordinance you enacted. And that would, what I would bring back would be the transitional temporary housing and the RV structure and the manufactured home component. Or you can direct me to bring this through a legislative amendment where I need to, uh, this is item B. I need to give notice to DLCD and we would have two hearings. Um, so we would be, you know, both processes are within your um authority to do. And we can host a hearing with A, with item A or B. And the third would be to direct me to do the two simultaneous, to bring the emergency ordinance back and then also um begin work on the legislative amendment for the Timber Town theme and um the RV, RV permitting process. Do you have questions about those processes?
Mayor Tritt, so A would be take care of the emergency stuff?
Yes. And that I would bring back an ordinance to you at your next scheduled city council meeting. And that you could hold a hearing, do a first and second reading and potentially adopt.
Uh, this is Commissioner Engel, I'm trying to imagine, I, I'm really liking A or C because trying to imagine hearings on Zoom and COVID and no buildings and everything just seems such an impossibility right now. Do we have to have hearings? Because I'm really trying to avoid that problem.
Mm-hmm, no, I mean, in the same way that you adopted the emergency ordinance in response to um the wildfires in uh October, it's the same process. You can follow that.
Dave, do I have a motion?
I don't know.
They're all, they, they will all work and are good processes. And you all are hosting, hosting good forums here and you're providing communication and you're providing flexibility for people.
Counselor Page weighing in here, it seems to me that there is a, several hot points on what we have right now here that we've looked at that fit the emergency ordinance. Uh, let's get it done, the fastest, quickest, easiest. Um, I mean, let any, any of our constituents forgive us if we misstep, but that's what happens in emergencies. We're certainly trying our best to make it happen. And then some of the other ones that may not be quite so important uh could be moved into planning or uh the legislative process or whatever. But we've got a bunch of bullet points here, I think that we want to move as quickly and as uh efficiently as we can to get. I think that we want to move as quickly and as efficiently as we can to get passed through. So which A, B, B, C? Now, I'm, now.
Either directing, directing me to bring back an emergency ordinance that contains the specific items you'd like to have contained, directing me to bring back the specific items through a legislative amendment process and moving that process forward or directing me to do an emergency ordinance that contains the RV or the temporary housing, the manufactured home and the accessory structure, and then also directing to work on the bigger item. So those are, those are the three options.
I think the last option seems to have the best workability in my perspective to hit our bullet points that are really important. And then we could leave some of the rest for, finish the modeling. That's my two cents worth. So make a motion there.
Hurry up.
So that being said, then the, I would like to make a motion that we direct McCray, the Associate Planner with COG to go with the last option of that, which was adopt an emergency ordinance for, now which points, now I need to direct which points we're gonna have under the emergency ordinance?
A, B, C, and D.
A, B, C, and D.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then move to, for the, for the second part of this review for further discussion for planning on the, the balance of everything from D forward.
Yeah.
Did I chop that up enough for everybody? I, I hope you understand it.
From E forward, right?
Would you mind if I had to streamline, streamline that, Counselor Page? So the motion I have from Counselor Page is direct staff to bring some items back on an emergency ordinance, items A, B, C, and D of their report and to bring back items C, F, and G of their report through the legislative amendment process.
I think you mean E, E, F, and G.
Yes, I'm sorry, E, F, and G.
Okay.
Well, I have a second to that motion.
Second, Commissioner Engel.
Second Counselor Engel, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody, for thinking through this and giving time.
Greg, did you vote? You're on mute. Can you unmute, please? Greg, you're muted. I can't hear your aye. Raise your hand. Okay, we have seen out of the smoke. Thank you. So moving along, for, for Council's information, we only have about forty-five minutes left before we have to, we're terminated by, by Zoom. So we're gonna have to move quite quickly if we could. Moving along, Counselor, thank you, McCray.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Six point seven website bid, Counselor Engel.
You should have the document of the bid in front of you. I sent it to Kelly the other day to put in your packet. We, it is a bid from Melissa, Marissa, Marissa Owen or Marissa Mascheri. Her family has property in Detroit. And she has finished building the Detroit, I can't think of the right word. She's built three different websites that she sent us a link for, plus her background, her qualifications and the pricing and all of those things. So I will answer questions based on, on, on the bid that she submitted. She's, she's not here, but let me know what you need questions for. And if you really need me to, I can share my screen.
I don't have it. So wasn't FEMA saying they could do this for free?
That was a misunderstanding, no. Now, what I do know is I believe it's part of the CARES Act that they will provide money to help you rebuild your website or to pay for a revamping of your website. I heard that from Danielle Gonzalez the other day, that the CARES Act will help you rebuild websites.
Okay.
So, so there's that. But the, what that would mean is you would get the money from the CARES Act to pay somebody to do your website. So you don't, you don't have it?
No, I don't. I'm looking. Hold it.
So what I'm, I have never shared my screen, but I have it loaded up where I can, if that is helpful.
Well, let her rip.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try. I'm not, this is my first try, so here we go. So I have, it has been disabled that I cannot share my screen. So Kelly or Jim, you need to disable that so that I can. And in the meantime, I'll just keep talking. So we know that it needs a complete renovation. And what we want it to do is provide vital information for rebuilding and disaster assistance, plus it's set up for vacationers. So the goal of the website is to make it friendly, we're both desktop and mobile friendly. We're gonna have a new modern design and it'll be up to date with current content for residents and other stakeholders like vacationers to find the information that they may want to have. Let's see if, if we're able to do this yet. Nope. So I'll just keep talking. Marissa is currently a student at the Fowler College of Business in Sandy at San Diego State. She's gonna graduate with a degree, a bachelor's in business with a focus on marketing. She's enrolled in their digital marketing program in pursuit of professional certification. She's created six websites and currently maintains three of them. She also manages social media accounts for three businesses and offers marketing consulting to prospective clients. What she goes on to say is her fit, what makes her fit for this task is that she offers competitive pricing and will work hard to use modern skills and marketing strategy. She gave us the link for three websites, Owen Construction, Front Street Bar in Salem and Detroit Lake. I don't know what the NA means, but detroitlakeNA.com. So what needs to be done is we have to transfer the platforms. She'll need the logging information for the current website. And she knows how to do that. She'll also need to update the content and the pictures. And she's included those in her proposal. Oh, NA stands for Neighborhood Association. Thank you, Elizabeth. I just blanked it completely. What she goes on to say is, let me see if I can find that. So to create, sorry, to create the website, she will charge us six hundred dollars and then she will maintain it at one hundred dollars a month, which will include basic maintenance, troubleshooting, content updating, and the necessary remodeling to stay modern. So that's what I know. And that's what Marissa has to say.
Okay. Discussion?
Now, what I will be happy to do is if you want to postpone this a month so that you can look at the websites that she sent me the links for. But I think you all know the Lake, Detroit Lake Neighborhood Association website, which is a good start. You could also go look at the Front Street Station website and then Owen Construction if you want. So it sounds like because the documents weren't made available to you that perhaps we'll need to wait a month, unless you're comfortable moving forward, so.
I guess my, as I'm sitting here, the thought comes to my mind, if we're, if we're, did we put this up to a formal bid? Or did we just?
I, I certainly didn't. I asked Marissa to submit a bid.
Yeah, and I'm wondering because, because of that, if we shouldn't put it out for anybody to bid on because we're a government entity.
Yep. We probably should then to, to keep all on the up and up.
So I think, without objection, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that, put it on the agenda for next month and have, make sure it gets out that we're seeking bids for the service. Any objection from Council? Okay, so we will do that. So, thank you. Moving along to new business. The Wade Foundation called and asked if they could be, I helped by sending a food truck up to Detroit. Attaches a letter from Justin Zulmer, presented with Wade Foundation. And just very quickly, they, they, I think that's the truck that I had lunch off of a couple of weeks ago. It was very good. It was a hamburger, but they had a very big menu. They sat up next to the post office and it was great. I really appreciated them being there, rested everybody else who was standing in line. So just for, yeah, it was the food technology truck and it was fantastic. So I, I really want to thank them and I'm trying to, we had, they had enough funding to end up going up for three weeks and after a report, they sold out of food this past Saturday. As soon as the community, as we suspected, gets a chance to take a break, eat a hot meal and come together, if just for an hour. I believe funding exists with the state to keep something like this going. And if you consider applying, we would be happy to keep working with you for as long as you want. So maybe we could look at possibly getting some funding from the state and continuing that for a while. So staff, if we could ask you to, we'll look at that, how we could maybe make that happen without objection. Okay. Then moving on, the one big, One Brick Shy Band. One Brick Shy Band is a band that at times played in Detroit. Jane from the band called and said they would like to play in Detroit at Nosa, Austin City. That is a generous offering. We'd like to have fun, have to play at the city park next spring or summer. Put that on, I guess we would like. Okay. So city trees, at least at the last City Council meeting, the council made a motion to have staff hire an arborist. Assess the tree, I was speaking to our FEMA representative, he asked me to wait, had to do so. Get an arborist to use instead of really paying for an arborist. It took some time.
Okay.
Kelly? Thank you. The, 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 Sodota will be assessing city trees and then cutting city trees. There will be a guide coming out this week from the state about what documents, et cetera, that they will need to, like an MOU and a letter of authority. If we choose to do this, the state will process and dispose of the trees. They will send an arborist out two weeks before the ODOT cutting crew. If the city needs to cut a hazard tree right away, then the city can cut and toss, leave a tree in the right of way and ODOT will pick them up. ODOT will have the responsibility of getting reimbursed from FEMA. Other options, choose to hire an arborist and the tree cutting service, market the trees in order to pay for the arborist and tree cutting, or choose to hire an arborist and tree cutting service. And then the city has the responsibility of getting reimbursed by FEMA. Yet the cost of the arborist and tree cutting extends, exceeds the dollars, see what you get from trees.
And I haven't heard back. I tried to call, his name is Cameron. They were supposed to put out a guide. And I called him today and haven't heard back from him. But it's something that we have to decide on soon. For sure, a lot, there's a lot of city trees that need to come down and concern citizens. I've been calling in regards to that. Just which way we want to go.
Greg Shepard, do, do we have a surveyor lined up to help with that project?
We don't have anybody signed up. That's what I'm saying is, I was going to har, you guys, the City Council asked me to hire an arborist. So when I was talking to Lee Thomas, who was our FEMA representative, he said, wait, let me find out what Marion County is gonna be doing. So anyway, it took a little while, but finally, then we found out that FEMA, that, that Mayor ODOT was being hired to cut trees for the city. And it's, it's only been, I think, a week from last Thursday that this happened. So they're trying to get out a guide. ODOT is to let us know what they need, whether it's an MOU, some type of agreement, if that's where we're gonna go. And it seems to me that it would be better for us to have them cut the trees and have them be responsible for getting reimbursed by FEMA. Because with FEMA, you have to incur the bill first and then get reimbursed. So no idea what that would cost us to hire an arborist and have someone come in and cut the city trees. I know it won't be cheap, it'd be expensive.
Gary will do it for nothing.
It's just a, a thing of where, so at that point, where do the trees go? If Gary cuts them, where do they go? Who gets the trees? How do we pay? You know, I don't know how that works, how that's gonna work. And that's what we have to figure out, how, how this is gonna work for us without spending a lot of time talking about it. Because it needs to be done because the winter's coming, it's gonna be snow loads in the trees and whatnot. And we've already had several trees that have already come down. Because of winds. Small, not huge trees, but trees that would hurt if they hit somebody or something.
Mayor Tritt here. As Jeff had mentioned there, what is our quickest and most effective route to identify city trees? But do we have to bring a surveyor in or?
An arborist.
Well, they, how are they gonna know whether it's on city property or not?
It wouldn't be that hard to tell. You've got maps to show the, the feet, because the, the rider could be thirty feet, could be sixty feet. Could be, and we have maps that show that, first of all.
Okay.
And then I believe the meters and then telephone poles are pretty darn close to the right of way.
We got an estimate of when, if we do the, the one with ODOT and all that. Do we have an estimate? Have they given us a timeframe of when they can do that?
No. I have a calling to Cameron, so I'm hoping I will know a little bit more when I, when he returns the phone call. Because this, you know, like I said, ODOT, I was just hired barely two weeks ago to, you know, to do the. to do the cutting of the city trees.
Jim, could I say something? Uh, Tim Luke here. Um, I can't speak for Gary, but this is one of the situations, you know, he'll be up there from American Underground and logging and has all necessary everything. If you guys can just get the trees that you want, uh, Mark to take out. I'm quite confident, especially the troubled trees that could pose any type of danger immediately and cause, you know, a liability for, for the city that I'm, I'm fairly confident that Gary will go take care of that for you. And he'll take those out and clean it up and be gone. Uh, at no charge. That's what this whole operation for our logging was, uh, about, including if the city needed help.
I think because this is a emergency situation, uh, we do not, FEMA told me, we do not need to, um, go out and get bids because it's an emergency situation. Yeah.
And like I said, there should be no charge other than if you want to hire an arborist to look at them and so forth and survey or have whoever do that. But as far as removing the trees that, because we have all the equipment up there and, and the crews and so forth, that would be fairly painless.
I think in arborists, you know, we need to keep as many trees as we can. You don't want, you know, we need to make sure that there are trees, they are trees that need to come down. Um, I just need direction from the city council on what to do here. Cause I, I know I need, we need a little bit more information in regards to this ODOT cutting them, but, um, maybe I can just, uh, see if I can get that and we can go from there, I guess. But I do, I need help on this. Seriously, seriously. Cause I don't know, I don't know what to do. I don't know which is the best way to go.
Counsel? One option would be, I, I think now that we're kind of getting the Zoom thing down is, is have Kelly talk to ODOT. It's, it sounds like we're, we've been talking with them. Um, and then have a special session just to vote on what we want to do. Soon as we get, um, we can include, uh, Tim Luke's group is a possibility, but see what ODOT can do or wants to do and how fast they can do it.
So, excuse me, is Gary licensed and bonded and all that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
This Council Engel here. I do like the idea of having like a presentation from ODOT because what we have to be very careful of is to continue to do all the process correctly through FEMA and all of that and our insurance. And then we also have to really be careful of conflict of interest and ex parte. And so I really like the idea of getting an official response from ODOT.
I agree with you, Shelley, for sure.
So without objection, then we will ask staff to continue to, uh, contact ODOT and get a, an estimate of timeline as quickly as possible. And then if necessary, readdress in, in a special session. And we can also look at the other option, other options open to us.
Um, Jim, um, I, I just remembered, I did ask that question about the timeline and, um, that Cameron did say that because Detroit was hit pretty hard that we would, um, they would probably start in, in Detroit, but you know, of course, that's not a for sure thing.
We need to make sure.
That's what he said, but.
We need to see if it's just for sure thing.
Yeah.
Go from there.
Okay.
Okay, without objection. So moving along, um, have a letter of resignation from Jim Bradley. Says I have moved permanently to Salem and will not, uh, rebuild. Therefore, I hereby resign as judge for the city. Thank you for the honor and opportunity. I have not abandoned Detroit and will keep in contact with the community. Sincerely, Jim Bradley. So I need a motion to accept the resignation or declare a vacancy for the position of a city judge.
I'll make a motion. Greg Shepard.
Shepard moves to accept the resignation and open, declare a vacancy. Second?
I'll second that.
And Counselor Page, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unmute, Shelley or Wave? You're muted. Okay.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstention, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, septic discussion, discussion. Shelley, what's going on with that real quickly?
Ken, Ken, do you want to talk?
I'm assuming we're meeting sewer here.
Are you talking about sewer or septic?
At 7.5, it says septic discussion. I don't know if there's talk.
This is in regards to septic.
Okay, so.
We're talking sewer.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything specific about septic. Kelly, go ahead.
Um, a gentleman had called from Environmental Management Systems EMS. They're the ones that put our septic, our, our septic in at the park. In regards to concern about private residents and commercial properties, failing drainage systems, um, basically where the lot size is not big and large enough for the drain field. And residents being able to rebuild because of it. I don't know. Rob, do you remember what he said about how to fix that problem?
Yeah. Um, so he, he had got, he'd reached out and gotten ahold of, uh, he'd called our office and then, and then he'd gotten ahold of Kenny, who was up, uh, up in Detroit flushing. So Kenny met with him for about an hour. And he'd expressed concern that homes would not be allowed to be rebuilt because of their, either the lots being too small or the fact that their, uh, drain fields were disturbed during the cleanup. So his idea was to, uh, and I'm not endorsing this idea in any fashion. Um, his idea was that, and especially with trying to rebuild downtown, that there could be a small treatment plant built, which would allow the use of more, or allow the use of less drain field. So then you could rent for people, from people who are not going to rebuild, you could rent their drain field space out from them or purchase it or something like that. Anytime that you combine more than two people on a drain field, there has to be some sort of at least semi-governmental organization to it, whether it's a homeowners association or a sewer district. So, um, I mean, that's really as far as that discussion went, but I think it is worth mentioning. And I think somebody probably should chase that down. And I, I do remember, uh, Commissioner Cameron uh, saying something about, uh, the septic drain fields and that they were working with DEQ on, on, on a, um, some sort of a waiver. But, you know, that was back in, in, uh, October. So my brain's been scrambled way since that time.
This is Ken Woodward, uh, Chair for NSSA, North San Am Sewer Authority. We've, uh, had meetings with, uh, which DEQ's been involved. I guess the property owner is going to have to contact Marion County. They're the ones that are going to set the rules. If the tank's okay and the drain field's been damaged, during cleanup, uh, there's going to be issues there. They're not going to be able to rebuild. Uh, it's going to have to be the city of Detroit working with Marion County. Uh, we haven't discussed a whole, a whole lot of this. You know, what is the city going to allow the RVs? Are they gonna, uh, Shelley probably remembers talking about having outside tanks, which we also checked in, well, we heard that there's very few available. That you could put a tank on the outside of the RV big enough
At 15 minutes.
For one or, uh, one every, or one week or two weeks of usage, and then it's going to have to be pumped. That's going to be expensive. I can't speak for Marion County. I can't speak for, uh, what they decide, the onsite septic people. Sanitarium, let's say it that way.
I'm going to say, we need a lot more information and, and I'm going to suppose that we push this off. Yeah. On to 15 minutes. Go ahead. So I think we need, without objection, I think we need a lot more information.
Who's to follow up? Rob?
Yeah, that, that's something we'd be willing, willing to follow up on, to make some calls to Marion County.
And, and Rob, could you get a, could you give me your email so I can follow up with you on some other stuff on that too, please?
Sure. I'll put it in the comments if you want to, you can see it down there.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Jim, this is Keith Munn. I just went through Marion County on my septic system and they wanted to inspect it and they wanted to make sure that the tank was in good condition and that the leach lines were in good condition and it passed. And they were really super good to work with. All it's going to take is somebody to go down and talk to them to figure out what they want for standards.
Yeah.
It was easy.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, so, uh, HPH will be following up on that. And we really do have to move on because it's going to cost us money if we go past nine. So, um, a lot. Um, do you have a motion? We, uh, Christmas bonus?
This is what I.
Oh, um, if past council has given a, a $30 Christmas, a Christmas gift card uh, for Fred Meyer for part-time employees, $50 for full-time employees. Do we want to do that again this year? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we grant said gift certificates to our employees.
Second, Counselor Engel moves to grant a Christmas gift card to, uh, our employees part-time, full-time. Second Counselor Page, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All the same sign. And motion passes. Valid, verification, verification. This is to verify receipt of the abstract from the November 3rd, 2020 election and the governing board's acceptance of it as the official election result. So, um,
You just meant me to make a motion to accept that?
I just need somebody to make a motion to accept the certified results for the November 3rd, 2020 general election.
I make a motion to accept, uh, the, um, results of the November 3rd, 2020 general election as printed.
I have a motion, Counselor Page, to accept the certified results of the November 3rd, 2020 general election. Second?
Second, Commissioner Engel.
Second Commissioner Engel, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Abstention, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Letter sent. Any questions on letters sent? Questions on letters received?
Since we don't see them, I have, I've got nothing.
Okay. We'll work on that. Thank you. Uh, Commissioners Report, Mayor's Report. First of all, I keep forgetting, I was approached by the Oregon Mayors Association in September and asked if they would mind if I was nominated for, to become a board member of the Oregon Mayors Association. The rationale was they wanted somebody who had a a working relationship with what happened in the fire in the canyon and, and small cities around the state both there. And they thought that maybe I could do that. So I said, I guess so, and, and was elected as a member of the Oregon Mayors Association Board of Directors. So, um, there we go. Uh, go from there. Uh, the month has been spent in, in a lot of Zoom meetings. Uh, LLC has a meeting once a month. Uh, currently there's a, a meeting of, uh, of, uh, elected officials, uh, working with Jody Christensen of the, uh, Governor's Office, uh, coming up with, um, things that we think we are going to need for the canyon to start the rebuilding process. That is all going to the governor. Next Monday, the 14th, I will be addressing the Governor's Wildfire Economic Recovery Commission, I think it is. About the needs for the canyon. So what I would like from, from people in the next week, counselors, is I have a, what they're primarily interested in are short-term goals, long-term goals. I've identified the short-term goals as of course, the water system. And I have a, a list of things that I managed to forget. Uh, sh- short-term goals would be immediate terms, a water plant rebuild, uh, online and, uh, wifi fiber underground, they're working on that. Our long-term, my long-term goals that I came up with. Uh, and then the septic is your short-term, I'm sorry. Long-term, uh, the sewer project, and can we move that any faster than it's already going? And then how do, can we look for the state for some help in promoting tourism for next summer? Because that's going to be so vital in, in getting people to come back to the canyon. Any other ideas? Please call me or email me, uh, so I can put that presentation together for next Monday afternoon from one to three. And go from there. Other than that, it's just been a lot of Zoom meetings and, uh, working with, uh, Matt and Jason on, on the grant application for the USDA, which has been very time consuming. And, and going from there. So I'm not going to waste a whole lot of time on other meetings, but it's been kind of a hectic month. Moving along, Police and Safety Commissioner, uh, Counselor Henderson is not here. Street Commissioner, Counselor Shepard.
Um, oh, I've, I've been, uh, touring around the city streets and, uh, they're really taking a beating with, uh, the heavy truck traffic and, and equipment. It'll, it'll probably get worse. Um, and I'm waiting for, um, uh, a bid from, uh, Andrew Sigman, i- i- a second bid for the, uh, Forest Avenue Walkway and Paving Project. Uh, if he doesn't put one in, we'll go with the one from North San Am Paving. I think we're going to need a, a back to router to, uh, blow out and clean some coals. I noticed, uh, during the flushing operations, a lot of them backed up and we had some flooding in different parts of town. And they're probably getting filled up with, uh, sediment and, and a lot of material. And I picked up, uh, 30 to 40, uh, snow poles from ODOT. We need to mark our, uh, fire hydrants. A lot of those poles got burned. And if we get a four or five foot snowfall, we're not going to be able to find the fire hydrants. So we need to, need to do that pretty soon. And that's about it.
Thank you. Water Commissioner, Counselor Manthe is also not with us tonight. Building Commissioner, Counselor Engel.
We have received a lot of, um, electrical permits. Why? I don't know. Because if you don't have a house, how can you have electrical? So I'm, I'm confused by that. Um, but I know one of these days I'm going to be seeing a bunch of, uh, building permits to sign off. They have to go through Marion County first and then they'll show up um, in our offices. I know I did sign off on one building permit happily and, um, I look forward to signing off on a lot more. So it's just, um, kind of waiting for everybody to get all their pieces together.
Thank you. Um, Parks and Rec, Counselor Page.
Um, the temporary modular that, uh, is in place from Mill City School District, uh, in one of the, in some of the parking spots there at the park with, um, the, uh, solar panels for that to operate. Um, I believe we still have fresh water, uh, available, uh, via the, our service building there provided by Marion County. Um, I don't, haven't heard that's going to change. That's a daily thing over there. I'm not, what are the? I don't, haven't heard that's going to change. That's a daily thing over there. I'm not, what are the, do, what are those hours that it's?
Two to four.
Twelve to four, yeah. And then, uh, this, is it this Sunday, uh, Jim, that we, they are putting the Christmas tree up in City Park and lighting it? The Neighborhood Association, uh, Elizabeth Smith, there's quite a group of people that have volunteered many things to make all of that happen. That Christmas tree is going to be put up, uh, in the next few days, and then there's a lighting, uh, Sunday. I'm going to say the time is four.
Four thirty.
Four thirty. So that's happening, uh, this Sunday at four thirty at the City Park, and that's all I got.
Okay. And thank you to Counsel Page and for providing a, a twenty-foot tree. I've seen pictures of it, it's beautiful. And, and you're right. A lot of people have put a lot of work in it. Dave Wallery, who is a longtime homeowner, homeowner up there, decorates the Kaiser, City of Kaiser Tree, uh, has for years. He's coming up to help with his expertise on that. And then I understand there's going to be hot chocolate and coffee available. So thanks to the Midori family. So just my add, I could take it off my note. Emergency preparedness, nothing to report, we're still fighting it. Commissioner at Large, Counsel Hill is, is on today, as is the Planning Commission. They will be calling, we've been calling them back into session to begin to deal with those, uh, those, all the other things that we're going to be dealing with. Very quickly, Ken, the North Saniam Watershed Council, we're down to about four minutes.
Not a problem. The soil testing is complete, data's being reviewed. Get ready for a town hall in February, if not early March, and we should know by then what type of system we're going to have.
Great. Thank you. Any public comments?
Uh, I, you're probably getting tired of me asking, asking this question, but have we, uh, yet, have we gotten a full accounting of, of the damage from the fire, you know, total houses, uh, businesses and primary homes? Have we ever gotten those figures?
I wouldn't know, but we're going to, um, need those for sure. I think Oregon Health Authority is going to need that information.
Well, it'd be beneficial for planning, too, you know, revenue and, and all that.
Yeah.
Well, I've heard some numbers, and I can't remember if it was from FEMA or not. Uh, we have a meeting with FEMA tomorrow. Elected officials in Mill City once a week, I'll be there for that. Um, I'll see what I can find out from them.
Okay, I'm just thinking, somebody's got to be keeping score somewhere, but, uh, I just wanted to bring it up.
Good point. Okay, if nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Counsel Page moves to adjourn. Second?
I'll second.
Shepherd seconds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Abstentions. Thank you, everybody, for joining and, and, uh, thanks for all the great work. We'll see you soon. Thank you, we are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for your participation.